Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the thirty-fifth meeting of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland. The time is six P M. And I now call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mills. Councilwoman Cole.
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
President Clark.
Here.
Mayor Sidnor.
Here.
Yeah, the core man, President.
Thank you. And just for the record, I see Councilmember Mills as well. And he is present. All right, so moving to agenda item number three, we have the approval of the minutes from our May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five special work session, May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting, June fourth, twenty-twenty-five work session, and our June ninth, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had the opportunity to review the sets of minutes. Are there any suggested edits or objections? All right. Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve the said minutes.
Madam President, I move that we approve the minutes as read into the record.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember James Cole. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a second from Councilwoman Christine Johnson. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mills. Councilman Simmons.
Yes.
President Clark.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving to agenda item number four, this evening, we have the report of the Mayor and City Council. And this evening, we will begin with Councilmember James Cole.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. I hope you're staying dry out there. I want to keep mine brief and just highlight on the high level things that I've done since our last meeting on June ninth. On June seventeenth, I represented the Marin City Council at the National League of Cities webinar, From Inbox to Impact, telling other municipalities about the National League of Cities outreach tool that the city of Laurel currently uses. On June twenty-sixth, I was appointed to the M M L Community Outreach and Engagement Committee, so I'll be helping with that for the next year. On July fourth, Independence Day, I was at home. I had some things on my mind, so I worked on two pieces of legislation that I'll be meeting with the mayor in the coming weeks on to see how we can move those forward. If you haven't noticed, if you're going southbound or northbound on Route one, where it's very rough, they started last night repaving the base. So the improvements will be coming there curb-to-curb repaving will be happening, hopefully completing the next four to five weeks. Upcoming events tomorrow night, the fifteenth of July at six P M., I'll be meeting with D P W and property owners that border alley number twenty-two between Montgomery and Laurel Streets, Montgomery and Laurel Avenue, I'm sorry. They are interested in repaving their alley and starting that process. Later this week, on the sixteenth through the eighteenth, I will be attending the National League of Cities Leadership Summit in Columbus, Ohio for policy updates. The biggest thing on the agenda that I can't wait to bring back for the rest of the mayor and council, we will be having two full sessions about what is included in the big beautiful bill and what it means for municipalities. So I look forward to bringing those updates back to everybody later next week. Ongoing right now, if you have not seen on social media or on the websites, the Fourth of July Committee and the Pride Committee are joining forces to pre-sell crabs. These are the old Laurel Lions Club crab sale that they used to do. You can get these for the next, for the rest of this month. We are taking pre-sale for the actual crab sale that will happen on August ninth. You can look for the Fourth of July and Pride Committees having a table at the farmer's market the next three weeks. So if you don't want to order online, we will have ability to take payment while we're there. And finally, the Pride Committee will be meeting virtually next Tuesday, the twenty-third, I'm sorry, Wednesday, the twenty-third at six P, six-thirty P M. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. Next, we have Councilwoman Christine Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I too will be brief because I checked with Councilman Cole. It was like, we haven't met in a long time. A lot has been going on, so we'll keep it very high level. I was excited to attend M M L Conference, take some more classes. I'm only one class shy of my certificate, so excited about that. Can't wait to finish that. Various city activities, you know, Parks and Rec sixtieth birthday anniversary, glad to help them celebrate the next, was a judge for the next bestseller book pitch competition, competition, so available to help other literacy people with their journeys, their running book journeys. One thing I was extremely excited about, I was able to go to the G forty-two Global Reformers Tenth Annual Prayer Summit for the mayor and his absence. It was very, very enlightening, exciting, and a chance for us to get together with different individuals to actually pray for our country and think about the things that are happening for America. So I was very, very excited about that. And then upcoming, just want to bring attention to an event. Angels Haven is hosting their annual Back to School Community Pop-Up Shop, which will be on Saturday, August the ninth, from twelve to six. They are currently collecting backpacks and school supplies. And at this event, I will have a table for voter registration and be able to provide some city council information. And I'm also pleased to announce my official city council Facebook page is up. Councilmember Christine M. Johnson, so I will be setting up information there about this event and other events coming up. And just want to remind the residents, which others will probably talk about this too, but the Safe Summer Nights program has begun. And just a reminder, I said, we can have as many programs as we want to help, as many kids as we want to help, but it doesn't make a difference if people don't show up. So just a reminder for people to show up. It's available, things for our teens to do. And I also want to put out there, I think some of the issue may be getting there. If people need help getting there, please reach out to me and we can see if we can make something happen because I don't want people to miss out for not being able to participate. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Next, for this evening, we have Councilmember Adrian Simmons.
Thank you, Madam President. First, just a personal note, members of councils are aware of, but sadly, I broke my left collarbone on July fourth playing frisbee in the backyard over the in-laws. All I've got to say is gravity, it's a downer. But so I'm sad to have been sidelined for the July fourth celebration here in the city. It was something I was really looking forward to, and thank you for the indulgence of the president and council this evening. I can't quite tie a tie with both hands yet, so I am with that one this evening. But yes, our first council meeting since Maryland Municipal League this summer, so it was exciting to be out there. I took some of the certification classes and open meetings, ACT and the public information, municipal employment law, social media and the First Amendment, planning for continuity of ops, so lots of great information and meeting with other municipal leaders from all across the state. I also was able to participate in the pre-conference tour of the historic town of Snow Hill and connected with the Economic Community Development Director there, as well as the Main Street nonprofit that they have in Snow Hill. So a lot of really good ideas to bring back to Laurel and more to come on that at a later date. One highlight I wanted to share with folks for me from the conference was the opening keynote was given by a gentleman named Tim Schreiber, and his topic was on the dignity index. And it was basically, the dignity index is a way to reflect on the language we use in public conversation and ensure that we're always speaking with respect and the dignity, no matter the degree of disagreement. So this is personally very important to me and public service, and I did sign and take the dignity pledge to sort of uphold and promote that in my service, so. A project I've been working on lately is to help evaluate our city's use and occupancy permit section and sort of how to best reflect some of the relatively newer spaces we have around town like coworking. So I want to express my thanks to the administration for just openness in the conversation, just to explore, to see what might be possible and sort of brainstorming. Thank you also to Director Selby from F M P S. And I really want to propose a collaborative approach with the business and city to achieve the two goals of keeping our residents safe, but also promoting a strong business economy within our city. And I think we can achieve that by working together. Rapid fire a couple of things, and I'll close with a closing thought. Flag Retirement Ceremony with the Sons of American Legion back on Flag Day. Just a very moving ceremony to be a part of, and also note to folks, if you've got a flag that has reached the end of its service, please go to the American Legion. You can turn it into them in a red postbox out front, and they will respectfully retire that in ceremonies they have throughout the year. It was great to join with Councilman Mills at the Hundred Fathers Breakfast, so thank you for that, and to spend some time meeting with Congressman Glenn Ivy. It was a buzzin' wing June Historic District Commission meeting. Thank you to all town residents who are going through renovations and upgrades. We really appreciate it. Great to see everybody there. Did an interview with, for Council Connections with the city to come out on the YouTube channel soon. Great to be at the Juneteenth Festival with the talented book list and the Wildcats over there. Last thing, I want to express the thanks to our I T Director, Mr. Cornwall Shield, for his assistance with the resident with an email issue, trying to get some emails from the city. There was a configuration snag that was throwing it off, and he was very diligent to trace it down for this resident. It took a number of weeks to un, sort of plug the computer snag and, but thank you to his persistence. And to me, it was really a testament to willingness of our city team to sort of go that mile to help our residents. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Back to you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Next, we have Councilmember Jeffrey Mills. Did you want to test, I think you're on mute. Did you want to test your sound or is it not working? Okay. All right, I think. No, we can't hear you. Okay, we can see you speak, but we can't hear you. Perhaps I will go for my report, and then if you want to, you want to mute and keep working on it. All right. If you mute Councilmember Mills, just in case you get it working. All right, I will go for now. For my report this evening, I'd like to share a few activities since our last meeting, as my fellow council member said, since June ninth. On June eleventh, I attended the Villages at Wellington Annual Meeting alongside our Laurel Police Department. For June fifteenth through June twentieth, unfortunately, I was out of town attending my best friend's funeral and supporting his family. June twenty-first, brought our wonderful Juneteenth celebration, and I want to thank the Juneteenth Committee and all of the residents who volunteered their time, especially Committee Chair Sandra Shute for her outstanding leadership. From June twenty-second through June twenty-fifth, I attended the Maryland Municipal League Conference in Ocean City. I'm excited to announce that during this conference, I completed all required classes for the Academy of Excellence in Local Government. This rigorous program requires completion of nine core subject matter classes and covers topics specifically designed to educate Maryland officials on the fundamentals of local government. I'd also like to congratulation, congratulate Mayor Todd Knock of Polkemoke City on becoming the new M M L President. Speaking of congratulations, I also want to recognize our own city clerk, Sarah Green, who was elected President of the Maryland Municipal Clerks Association. Sarah, your dedication to our city continues to make us proud. During June, I was also elected by the Prince George's County Municipal Association to serve as an at-large board member, and I'm honored to represent Laurel in this capacity along with my other appointments and memberships. On July fifth, I participated in our July fourth parade and the festivities at Granville Guti Laurel Lakes Park. The Laurel City Council had a wonderful presence there with our new giveaway items for residents, reusable cloth bags, backpacks, pens, pet wastebag holders, and information to help residents easily access our city website, events, and especially events for our youth. Of course, we also provided free cold water throughout the celebration. A big thank you especially to our clerks, to our city staff, and the Fourth of July Committee, including the D P W. I would also like to thank Mayor Sidnor for meeting with me on Thursday, July tenth, and in May to discuss my ongoing advocacy for the temporary extended curfew to address youth crime in our city. Since May twenty-second, I've submitted three resolutions because the data demands action. The Maryland State numbers tell an urgent story. Youth shootings in Maryland have skyrocketed from forty-one to one-hundred-and-seventy-one cases. Homicides nearly doubled, and juvenile handgun violations surged two-hundred-and-twenty percent. Just in two months, over six-hundred-and-thirty-seven juvenile crimes cases flooded our state attorney's office. Our children are in crisis, but there is hope. Cities like Laurel with strategic curfew programs, even temporary ones, see real results. Twenty-nine percent fewer nighttime juvenile arrests and eighty-five percent less youth victimization. The key isn't just enforcement, it's comprehensive support that asks why our kids are on the streets and provides alternatives. This is about protection, not punishment. A temporary curfew will safeguard our children during peak danger hours while we build stronger community support systems. I firmly believe this measure will restore safety and normalcy to Laurel, protecting both our kids and our residents. Our children's lives are on the line, so acting now was necessary. Also, during the months of May and June, I've been working with Mayor Keith Sidnor and the administration, as well as the Prince George's Barbers Association, to understand the concerns and needs to support small businesses while simultaneously adhering to the city of Laurel protocols. Thank you to Mayor Sidnor and our staff for providing a temporary courtesy to those small business owners at Phoenix Salon as you work through the requirements moving forward. And also, thank you to Mr. Chris Daniels for meeting and speaking with me numerous times, especially as I recently visited Phoenix Salons last week and spoke with the available shop owners. This Friday, I'll be taping my Council Connection segment titled Building Bridges: Community Solutions to Youth Crime Prevention. I'll be joined by youth, parents, and police officers because it truly takes a village to help our community, and we must work together. Finally, I've submitted several items for consideration, including a request to rename the council chambers and council conference room, as well as suggestions for new Safe Summer Night themes for our city's weekly youth engagement activities. In addition, as I've shared with individuals on social media as well as in person, and Councilwoman Johnson mentioned as well, we have a lot of activities. Many activities for our youth, not just including for the city of Laurel. We also have Prince George's County, Howard County that we, you know, partner with. I go to some of their events, and Arondo, so we have a plethora of things for the kids and the youth to do. Again, I agree with her. If you cannot make it to those, please let us know. We are happy to support. I am happy to support in any way to get the youth there so that they can start participating in more things. Thank you, and I look forward to continuing to serve our community. Councilmember Mills, were you able to fix your sound?
So I didn't fix it, but our director, James Cromwell, did.
Okay, as long as we can hear you, that's perfect. Please feel free to continue.
I'll just, I'll just be very brief. So thank you, Madam President, and welcome, everyone. Good evening. So majority of all of the events that the council has already mentioned, we was there. I definitely like to thank those who all came out for the One Hundred Fathers Day event, the breakfast. It was, you know, I'm, my mind is ticking on something new and I want to, you know, bring that back sooner than later, maybe another event. But I'm glad and proud to announce that I have completed all of my, my core and elective classes at, for the Academy for Excellence of Local Governance. I supposed to graduate next year. Got the word about that, so I'm very proud of myself. That was one of the accomplishments that I had promised myself and promised, promised the constituents that I would educate myself on what's needed to be done and to help myself and the constituents. So so I'm proud about that and look forward to more. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Mayor Sidnor, are you ready to share your report as well?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank Council President and City Council for all the hard work you guys have been doing. Just want to go back on happened, something happened to the city that normally doesn't happen in our city on July the fifth. City had some teenagers came into the city. It was very disruptive. This was a trend going on in various cities throughout the state of Maryland. This is something not usually happening in our city. Our city is pretty safe. Our juveniles behave themselves. Police Department does a great job protecting our city, protecting our juveniles. Park and Recreation Department does a great job providing services for our juveniles. And so that just was an unusual event, but it highlighted some things in our city, but we always had a program for our juveniles. Every Friday night, the Park and Recreation Department have a teen drop-in program. And the numbers from this year start from January to his current Friday, last Friday, I think, the last Friday numbers, three-hundred-and-eighty-eight teens from thirteen to seventeen years old attend our Safe Drop Program on Friday nights. The Safe Summer Night Program is something I started when I was a council member, and I, and this is the second year it's going on as the mayor. It is a program for Saturday nights from thirteen to seventeen-year-olds when juveniles come into a safe space. They can get an education component, and they can learn some things. We're partnership with various community organizations that come in, that teach our kids educational skills, and also they can have fun. So we provide opportunities for our juveniles to have a safe place to engage, but the main responsibility falls on the parents. Let me say it again, the main responsibility falls on the parents. We are city councilmen, elected officials, we can create all the programs in the world, but parenting is the first avenue. Our job is to assist the parent as much as possible, and we will help them out, and we have been helping them out ever since I've been on the city council. Helping people is what we do. That's why we need to serve. So I don't want folks to think the city of Laurel is a city that's in danger, because we're not. We're not a city in danger. We're not exempt from anything like any other city. Things happen, and we're aware of that, and we can put things in place to prevent them from happening, but please, we have avenues for our kids to go to. Even our male youth program, we have cop camps. You know, we have things to engage our community all year round, so there's no excuse for these young folks act that way. There's things for them to do, and it all starts at home, and we need to start at home first. So I'll stop there. Some things I also wanted some announcements. A Real Talk Session we have initially I started, will start tomorrow from six, eight, six P M. Eight P M. It's Real Talk with the mayor. So it's no lecture, no forum, just come in, talk to us on your mind. Sometimes us as adults, we try and take what we think juveniles need, but now we're giving these juveniles a platform to tell us what things they want, but we can implement these things. So every Tuesday starting tomorrow until the last Tuesday in August, we're gonna have a Real Talk Session with the mayor. I know different people come in and join as well, but it's all about the juveniles from thirteen to seventeen-year-olds. Come in there and express your mind and tell us what's going on. So looking forward to that program. This Saturday, once again, say Summer Night from six P M. To ten P M., the organization is coming in as well, and City Hall in the Park. City Hall in the Park on July the twenty-fourth from six-thirty-eight P M. At Marcus Coburn Field, Community Field. Looking forward to the community to come out there as well as to share what's on your mind as well. From there, Madam President, I will make announcements on reappointments. Can I do that this time?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I reappoint Elaine Collins to Youth Services Commission. I reappointed to the Tree Board, Joseph DiJohn, DiJohn, DiJohn Vinnie, and Ayelle Nagusi to Education and Variety Committee, and Toy Davis Education and Variety Committee. Our question for permission for the council to reappoint these four individuals I read on record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. As the mayor mentioned, there are four mayoral reappointments. Do I have a motion from the council to approve these four appointments mentioned?
Madam President, okay, sorry, Councilwoman. Madam President, I move that we confirm the appointments as listed in the record for Elaine Collins, Joseph Giovanni, Ayelle Nagusi, and Toy Davis.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Simmons and a second from Councilmember Jeffrey Mills.
Councilman Simmons.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson. I have to let her back. See, I just had to let Councilwoman Johnson back in the call, so.
All right, yes.
And President Clark.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor Sidnor, did you, would you like to say anything in addition to that?
Thank you, Council. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving to agenda item number six, we have our general public hearing. This is the time that we hear from you, our community. Your voice matters, and we value your input. We encourage you to share your thoughts, your concerns, and your ideas with us as they are essential to shaping our work and our city's future. Madam Clerk, can you please confirm if anyone has signed up to speak today?
Yes, Madam President. We did have three people signed up to speak. I believe the first person is Mr. McDaniel. Is that the?
That's who I see, Christopher McDaniel.
Okay, and when you're, when you open the public hearing, I can, I meet.
Okay, thank you. As a friendly reminder, each person has three minutes to speak. When I call your name, please state your full name, your street, and the city that you live in for the record. I will now open the general public hearing at six-twenty-five P M. I believe that we have Mr. McDaniel here with us for our virtual meeting. I'm not sure if you were able to hear me, but just first, welcome to our meeting. And as a friendly reminder, each person has three minutes to speak. If you can please state your full name, your street, and the city that you live in for the record. Please feel free to proceed.
Christopher McDaniel. For Washington, I live off of Atomic Heights Drive. I'm calling on behalf, I'm a business owner and city alone. So I get right into it. Good evening, Council President Clark, esteemed members of the city council, and members of all community. I apologize if you hear some rain, some background noise, but I'm in my car, bad signal. But my name is Christopher McDaniel, and I'm here on behalf of the Prince George's County Barbers Association, representing independent contractors and grooming professionals across our city. I stand before you not just as a community advocate, but as a small owner who understands what it means to build something from the ground up. We are here today to raise urgent concerns about the new occupancy, occupancy permit protocol being implemented for individual sweep runners within mixed-use commercial properties. Let me be clear, we understand the importance of safety. We respect the role of fire codes, compliance measures, and city desire, and the city's desire to maintain high standards. But this sudden enforcement with little notice and without proper community input has left many independent professionals in a state of fear and financial strain. Here are the issues we are asking to address. First, clarity. What exactly are the compliance expectations that differ between leaseholders and individual sweep runners? Two, equity. How is it justifiable to charge two-fifty, a two-fifty, a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar occupancy permit fee to independent renters who may only occupy suites temporarily or part-time, and who also are not the leaseholders of the actual building? Number three, communication. Why were no open forms or advanced communications issued to tenants, many whom are barbers, stylists, nail techs, and massage therapists? And four, logistics. Given the high turnover ratio of suite-based businesses, is it practical or even enforceable to require new permits every time professionals switch locations or move in or out of the suites? This is not a, this is not just a procedural concern. This is a matter of survival. These are very, these are the very entrepreneurs who pay to renew state licenses and to stay in compliance and stay. These are very, these are the very entrepreneurs who pay to renew state licenses and to stay in compliance and, um, state, um, to stand their standing with the state. Uh, these are the people who sponsor little league teams, donate haircuts to unhoused, and encourage civic participation through service. And here's the most important truth. When small businesses can't breathe, the entire community loses its heartbeat. So before I go and extend any more of your time, I would like to request to be added or request that this new occupancy protocol be added to the agenda for the twenty, the twenty-eighth meeting, the in-person meeting, to allow other small businesses and independent contractors a chance to address their concerns as well as to give the city a, uh, uh, opportunity to come up with the questions or answer the questions that have been sent out through emails uh, to Councilwoman Clark, President Councilwoman Clark. Uh, the communication has been done between Councilmember Adrian, um, just giving the city a chance to, to, to be transparent and to reestablish the trust between the small businesses and the city. I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Um, as I shared as well, please feel free to sign up with our clerk, uh, for the twenty-eighth, for the July twenty-eighth meeting, which will be in person. Uh, thank you for joining us today. We appreciate it. Next on, uh, for our general public hearing portion, we have Rob Cecil. Madam Clerk, is Rob Cecil present with us today?
Yes, and I'll allow him to talk.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cecil, just a reminder, first, welcome to our meeting today. And, um, just as a reminder, each person has three minutes to speak. If you can please state your full name, your street, and the city that you live in for the record. Please feel free to start when you're ready.
Yes, thank, thank you, Madam President, members of the council, and Mayor Sidnor. Uh, Rob Cecil, R O B B C E C I L. My business address in Laurel is three one nine Main Street Laurel. And my residential address is seven oh one Robin Hood Hill in Annapolis. Uh, members of the council, I, just by way of history, I, um, I originally had purchased, I've been in Laurel since nineteen ninety-nine. Three one seven Main Street was my first building. Uh, and I currently occupy and own three one nine Main Street, which is where the, uh, former Sandy Spring Bank and now Atlantic Union Bank and then my law firm. I then purchased across the street originally three twenty Main Street in two thousand eleven. And that was a traditional corporate office for Revere Bank. And then in two thousand sixteen, what was known as the old Emory Art Building, I purchased that in two thousand, uh, um, in two thousand sixteen. Uh, I came up with the concept because I kept on getting a lot of inquiries for small businesses that just wanted a small office. And, um, I came up with the concept to create a shared office uh, and co-working space for three, uh, for three twenty-two Main Street. And there were two anchor tenants, the Driscoll Law Firm and the Downs Law Firm, and they were self-contained with bathrooms. And, uh, we had an agreement with the city that those traditional offices would have their own and separate, uh, U N O occupancy permit. But in the rear of the building, we had, uh, uh, like fourteen co-working or shared office spaces that would have a shared bathroom and a common kitchen. And it just really wasn't, uh, feasible to have a separate U N O every time a tenant moved in and moved out because a lot of these tenants were short-term. When Revere Bank moved out of three twenty, I converted three, uh, twenty, uh, three twenty into that same co-working space. And I just think that there's probably a better solution here. And I think the solution is not to have a separate U N O. Uh, be, these were, these are professionals that we attract at three twenty. There were no hair salons, there were no nail salons. It was only office space. And I think if you want to perhaps do a sort of an umbrella, uh, policy for the landlord, and that's the concept we came up with, maybe a once-a-year inspection? And then perhaps consider that there is a list by the, uh, landlord or the owner of those buildings so the city can track those build, businesses and know how vibrant Main Street is and come up once a year with a list. I just think it's, uh, really onerous and it's too much of a burden on city resources and also the small business person for every time a new tenant comes in or comes out, uh, to have that two hundred and fifty-dollar fee. And it's just, uh, it seems like there's a, a more sensible solution and a, uh, a, a master U N O approach. And I know my time's up, so I wanna, I wanna, uh, uh, disc, I'll, I'll stop right there.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Cecil, for joining us. We appreciate you being here.
Oh, and I just want, one last thing is I, I no longer own those, uh, businesses. Uh, Chrissy Gill owns those businesses. I sold them two years ago.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Christina Gill. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please confirm if Ms. Gill is present?
Um, I have, uh, someone that says Chrissy, so I'll let, I believe that's the same, uh, Ms. Gill, so I'll let that person speak. And then I will remove it.
Okay. Good evening, um, to confirm, is this Ms., uh, Christina Gill? I believe you're on mute.
Hi, I apologize. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, um, just to confirm, is this Ms. Christina Gill?
It is. This is Christina Gill.
Thank you. Uh, just as a friendly reminder, if you can please, uh, state your name, your full name, your street, and the city that you live in for the record. And everyone has three minutes to speak. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, my name is Christina Gill. My address is three six two nine Sykesville Road in Westminster, Maryland, two one one five seven. Um, first of all, I just wanna thank everyone for having me, um, and allowing me to speak. Um, I'm not gonna hold up your guys' time. I just wanna second what Rob Cecil said. Um, I'm now the owner of three twenty and three twenty-two Laurel, um, which we have multiple tenants. And we, I just, I, I agree with everything that the other people said about the burden that it puts on the tenants, the business owners, and the city of Laurel, um, to have to get a U N O for each, um, office, but that's all I have to say and just wanna thank you guys again.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gill, for joining us. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
So I don't believe that we have anyone else. We had three people signed up. Madam Clerk, uh, did you receive any additional? Just wanna confirm that we're all set with the three individuals.
And that was all that were signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you so much. Seeing that there are no additional, um, speakers signed up to speak today, I will now close the general public hearing portion at six thirty-six P M. We will now move to agenda item number seven, which is a bid recommendation, L A two five dash zero one zero. Eighth Street Improvement Project. We have Department of Public Works here today and Acting Director Tommy Helm, Helms here to help us understand even more. You now have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sidnor, President Clark, and Laurel City Councilmembers. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for awarding contract for Eighth Street Improvement Project, L A twenty-five dash zero ten. This project involves the removal and replacement of concrete sidewalks, A D A compliant ramps, and concrete curving gutter. It also includes the installation of new thermoplastic roadway markings, a raised crosswalk with rectangular rapid-flashing beacons, and the construction of a new concrete sidewalk apron at the park where one does not currently exist. Additionally, asphalt resurfacing will be performed on Eighth Street from Montgomery Street to Montrose Avenue with an extra hundred feet of two-inch-by-two-minute asphalt resurfacing on the hundred, on the eleven-hundred block of Eighth Street up to the guardrails data. The Department of Public Works has solicited public bids for this project resulting in, uh, receipt of eleven submissions. A formal bid opening was conducted on June sixth, twenty twenty-five at the Laurel Municipal Center. The submitted bids ranked from lowest to highest are as follows. Calvert-Reddy Mix and Concrete Supplies LLC, two hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars and eighteen cents. Stanley Concrete LLC, two hundred fifty-two thousand even. Patent Construction Company LLC, two hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars. S F M S LLC, two hundred eighty-one thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. E N R Services, two hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Alcoa Concrete Masonry, three hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred twenty dollars. Image Asphalt Maintenance, three hundred twenty-nine thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. Espina Paving, three hundred sixty-one thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-one cents. Highway and Safety Services Inc., three hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. Ross Contract Inc., three hundred ninety thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars. Blue Ridge, five hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Bidder two is the low, lower bidder, uh, due to their certified M B status and within the three percent of the lowest bid. Funding for this project is available through the adopted F Y twenty-six Capital Improvement Program, Eighth Street Improvements. It's recommended that the contract for this project be awarded to Stanley Concrete LLC of Crofton, Maryland, a certified minority business enterprise with a bid of two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars, with the contingency of an additional twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars for a total of two hundred seventy-seven thousand, two hundred. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helms. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding bid recommendation, L A two five de- um, dash zero one zero? Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Yes, so thank you, Madam President. And just to highlight something that came up in work session for residents. Um, uh, one of the enhancements through this project is to create sort of a concrete apron, as Acting Director Helms just mentioned, right there next to McCullough Field. So I know for families and for those who like to use McCullough Field, it's gonna be a nice smooth area now as you walk along where all those parking lots are. It's a little, little rough night now. So excited to see this enhancement come through and just wanted to share that with folks who might be with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Any additional questions or comments regarding this bid recommendation? Sorry, evidently everyone's phone's going off right now. Um, with no additional questions or comments, I will now entertain a motion for bid recommendation, L A twenty-five dash zero one zero.
Madam President, I move that the council accept the bid recommendation for Eighth Street Improvement Projects to Stanley Concrete LLC of Crofton, Maryland for a total of two hundred seventy-seven thousand, two hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember James Cole and a second from Councilmember Jeffrey Mills. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Yes.
President May Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Helms. Uh, next on our agenda, we actually have you again for a bid recommendation, L A twenty-five dash zero one one Carriage Hill Drive and Carriage Hill Lane Improvement Project. You now have the floor, Acting Director Tommy Helms.
Thank you, President Clark. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for awarding the contract for Carriage Hill Drive and Carriage Hill Lane Improvement Project, L A twenty-five dash zero eleven. This project involves the removal and replacement of existing sidewalks and curving gutter. It also includes two-inch deep milling four feet wide from the edge of curb and gutter, followed by a two-inch-by-two-minute asphalt overlay for the entire length of Carriage Hill Drive and its length. Additionally, the project will upgrade all ramps to new A D A compliant standards, install new thermoplastic roadway markings and crosswalks, and perform full-depth reconstruction of the street at the bottom of the hill to ensure a long-lasting pavement. This project will improve the stormwater drainage. The Department of Public Works has solicited public bids for this project resulting in the receipt of ten submissions. A formal bid opening was conducted on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five at the Laurel Municipal Center. The submitted bids ranked from lowest to highest are as follows. Stanley Concrete LLC, one hundred forty-four thousand even. V M P Construction Inc., one hundred sixty-four thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars. Calvert-Reddy Mix and Concrete Supplies LLC, one hundred seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. S F M S LLC, one hundred ninety-one thousand, seventy-two dollars and ninety cents. Image Asphalt Maintenance Inc., one hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred forty dollars. Highway and Safety Services Inc., one hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars. Alcoa Concrete Masonry, two hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred seventy dollars and fifty cents. E N, E N R Services Inc., two hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. Espina Paving, two hundred thirty-one thousand, nine hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty cents. Patent Construction Company LLC, two hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars even. The low bid is a certified M B U firm. Funding for this project is available through the adopted F Y twenty-six Capital Improvement Program, Carriage Hill Drive and Carriage Hill Lane Improvements. It's recommended that the contract for this project be awarded to Stanley Concrete LLC of Crofton, Maryland, a certified minority business enterprise with a bid of one hundred forty-four thousand dollars, with the contingency of an additional fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars for a total of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helms. I see that we have a question or a comment from our council members. Councilmember Mills, please proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Helms. Uh, you had, you had mentioned about the, uh, stormwater drainage. Um, you know, one of the, we just all just received these, uh, alerts on our phones just a minute ago of, um, high, um, flood watch. And so when you mentioned about the stormwater drains, a lot of times the, um, the stormwater drains are the reasoning of sinkholes. And I wanted to know, when this job is getting prepped, are the stormwater drains being inspected?
Um, D P W does not, um, personally, uh, we, the city doesn't, uh, have ownership of the storm drains. So I would say no from D P W aspect. We don't inspect the storm drains, but we do funnel the water that goes into them.
Now, Courage Hill, um, those roads are not state roads and they're not county roads as well.
Correct.
So.
The all, all stormwater falls under the county.
Falls under the county? Okay, okay, so, so would, um, I mean, like, have you all, like, ever had the county, like, to kind of, uh, assimilate these, all of this together to make sure that, you know, I mean, like, what's the purpose of, you know, laying a new mat down when asphalt mat down and, um, and doing the, the curbs and gutters? But you may have an issue with the stormwater, you know, the stormwater, uh, inlet and then the, uh, the box itself.
Right now, I, I, I don't know of any, any issues with anything being clogged down there. Uh, D P W's, uh, main responsibility is just to channelize that water into the storm drain. So if there's any uneven curving gutter there that is sitting lower than grade, we're gonna pop it up to grade so we can get that water to the storm drains.
That's my issue right there. So if it's uneven, that means that there could be an issue in that, in that covert box. It could be like.
The, the, the biggest issues that we see, uh, in that neighborhood is the, the root balls of the trees are pushing up, uh, concrete or lowering concrete. So it, it is from the trees essentially. I, I, I don't have any complaints of, uh, storm drain boxes or, or anything down there.
Yeah, well, nobody will see it unless you, you, you gotta open the top, you gotta get down in it to, to see. The, the, the trees, those are old trees there. The tree roots, they funnel to the drainage, the water, you know, they go to, they, they go to either pipes and the, and the roots break pipes. They either go to the, the drainage, you know, where the, uh, where the, where the inlet of the water is. And so that's what I'm just, I'm just curious to know if this is done. Because it's like, I mean, it, it can be done if you know who is in charge of these inlets. Um, just to be, I'm thinking proactive instead of reactive. So if you're doing a job, you're spending a, a, a large amount of money to do a job, but how about let's do the job right the first time instead? but how about let's do the job right the first time instead of having to go back and do a job over because once the job gets done, and then if a tree root is going into, you know, breaking a pipe, causing a sinkhole, now you have to tear up what you just laid down, which is more money. So this is, so I, this is, this is what I would like. I would like to start thinking proactively instead of reactively.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can, you know, we can pop tops, look into storm drains, see if there's any debris in there. Uh, but as going into storm drains, doing storm drain maintenance, that falls specifically on the county.
Right. It wouldn't be debris. I mean, well, it can be debris. The debris would be like, uh, if the box is built, built up by either concrete or built up by bricks, then, or both, then, uh, the, the debris would be the, the, um, the concrete or, or the, um, or the bricks. So if that, if the bricks have failed because of a root, a, a, a thing of a box, and, you know, and, and the root is gonna push, the root is gonna push that, that brick down to get to the water. Once that brick is, is knocked down, now you have a ripple effect, a chain of, a chain of event, whereas though that's gonna, the, the root is gonna knock the brick down, the root's gonna go to the water, the root can break pipes, the, the box can tilt over. You would never see it because the, the inlet top is covering up that problem. You know, you, you're talking to a guy who fell through a bridge, you know, a four-fifty and two-ninety-five. You'd never know what's going on underneath asphalt, not unless you just lift it up and look. You never know what's going on into, in that box. You gotta take the hole, you gotta take the, the, the manhole top off. You gotta either get down in there and, and inspect it. You got to know what's going on. If, if you don't know what's going on, we wasting money.
Councilmember Mills, just, I'm sorry, just wanted to confirm. Did you have additional questions about the bid recommendation for, um, for LA twenty-five?
My, my recommendation is to be proactive instead of reactive and, you know, because we spending money, but not, not, not doing a chain of events one time instead of having to constantly do it. So, you know, if you wanna just keep wasting money, right ahead.
Understood. Uh, if, um, it sounds like, uh, Mr. Helms, um, understands your recommendation. If possible, could you also just email him and the administration so that you can have that in writing so that he can understand what you're speaking of if possible?
And, uh, Miss, uh, Miss Mills, we, we do.
Mr. Fed.
Uh, sorry, we, we do walk the roads with, with our engineer and city engineer, uh, to try to pinpoint any of those issues. If we see soil or any depressions, then that, that's a sign for us to get the county involved in this. But a, as of right now, we, we did not see any down there.
And then that's all I'm asking, is just to get the county involved so that we can do a job one good time instead of having to cons, spend money, then re-spend money. That's all I'm asking. Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Sidnor, you now have the floor.
Yes, I think, um, Acting, uh, City Administrator, Deputy City Administrator of Tim Miller is, uh, also an engineer that been doing this job for a long time. He probably can give you some more insight, uh, as well, just to clear some things up with Councilman Mills.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Um, Director, uh, Miller, I also see your hand. Please feel free to proceed.
Sure, hopefully you can hear me. Um, yes, we do look for those depressions and things of that nature, Councilwoman Mills. Um, we had one, uh, very typical to, what happens is a pipe will break maybe four feet to two feet outside of a manhole. What happens is the pipe stays in place and the manhole settles. And this was the case at Fourth and Cherry Lane and a very large manhole. So we do look for those things when we do take our site walks with the engineer, the city engineer. And I've uncovered numerous occurrences of this. And it usually develops by a manhole two or four feet, I'm sorry, a pothole, two to four feet outside of an inlet or a manhole structure, um, similar to what's happening up the street from you right now. Um, right? That, that storm drain and that.
Exactly.
Depression is about four feet up the street from the manhole. So what that, what happens is that's concrete pipe and it just shears and it starts to let the soil in. And again, we bring a lot of this to the attention of the county. Um, we have some places where inlets have collapsed, things of that nature. And again, uh, we alert the county to all of these, where the lids cave in. Um, I think there was even a, a lid on West Side Boulevard that is Boeing, uh, right now, if you drive up it. And we've brought all that to the attention of the county. Doesn't always get their attention, but we've done it through either their three-one-one or I call one of their directors down there. So that's, I just wanted to weigh in on that.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you weighing in. That's what I was looking for. Because it's, it's a, um, I just don't wanna, I'm not interested in wasting money. I'm, I'm not interested in that.
Absolutely.
And I'm, I'm not, I'm not interested for myself, nor, you know, my neighbors. And so that, that's why I gotta ask that critical question. And so, you know, the, the proactiveness is what's gonna help us save money. We, we, we're, we're in the time right now. We definitely have to save money. So I don't, as far, I just, this, this is my point.
Uh, got it. So duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Uh, thank you, Mr. Helms. Thank you, Director Miller. Seeing that there are no additional questions or comments from the council, I will now entertain a motion for this bid recommendation LA twenty-five dash zero one one for Carriage Hill Drive and Carriage Hill Lane Improvement Project. Um, do I have a motion? From the council. I'm happy to start it off if y'all need it.
Madam President, I move that we accept the bid recommendation for Carriage Hill Drive and Carriage Hill Lane Improvements to be awarded to Stanley Concrete for a total not to exceed one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. I have a motion from Councilmember Cole. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilmember Adrian Simmons. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, thank you again, Mr. Helms, um, for your time with us. Moving to agenda item number nine, we have a second public hearing with possible action on resolution number six dash two, zero, two, five, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, adopting the twenty-twenty-five City of Laurel Sustainability Plan. Here with us this evening, we have Ms. Michelle Blair. Please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, Laurel City Council members and Mayor Sidnor. Tonight is the second presentation of Resolution six dash twenty-twenty-five for the mayor and council's consideration that will adopt the twenty-twenty-five City of Laurel's first sustainability plan. As pr- as presented in a previous work session and the June ninth mayor and city council meeting, the plan is a roadmap for creating and supporting a sustainable community. The resolution, um, as modified at the request of the council, includes the city's vision of sustainability, uh, which is meeting the environmental, social, and economic needs of the present generation without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their needs. The resolution also highlights how the plan will guide the city towards a more sustainable future that will, that focuses on the four pillars of people, planet, prosperity, and peace and partnership, while embracing social equity, fairness, and the health and wellness of our residents, businesses, and environment. A copy of the full plan can be found on the city's, uh, Green Living website. I respectfully ask that the council and mayor adopt this resolution so that we may continue our role as leaders in the area of sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Uh, Councilmember Simmons, please feel free to proceed.
Yes, I just want to clarify one item just for folks who are with us this evening. I know we first, uh, heard this resolution during our work session on the second. And one of the things that came out there is unlike the bids we just did, um, this isn't so much approval of certain projects, but definitely signals the council's support for the principles of sustainability and a lot of the programs we have had. So those people, planet, prosperity, is for the peace and the partnership. So I wanted to, to thank the residents who were involved in putting this together. I know it's been maybe even over a year at this point, uh, through a number of folks bringing this together and for, from Ms. Blair for all her hard work. So definitely looking forward to the city promoting it. And I know one of the things in this plan as well is the city itself thinking of ways that we can be smart with our own facilities and resources. Um, so thank you for spearheading that as well, Ms. Blair, and, um, thinking long-term for our resources and this place we call home earth. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Uh, Councilmember Mills, please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Ms. Blair. When, when, when you speak of this sustainability, I, I, it just always puts a smile on my face. I, 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 I hope, I hope the, the one who governs our soul grant you paradise for, for the work that you have done. Um, it's a, um, it, it's, it's to say yes to this right here is gonna go a long way. And I, I, I hope that the parents would even share this with their children because it's, it's not a education just for us, you know, uh, they call us old heads. We, we, they, this information has to trickle down to the elementary, elementary schools, middle schools, and the high schools. Because it's, it's, it's there, it's, we're doing this for them, you know, and then the futures to come. You know, like, uh, uh, Councilman Simmons', uh, child, that's, you know what I mean? All, all them boys, that's what we doing this for. And, uh, so I'm very proud, you know, of the work that you've done and we've done and everybody that put into this. So thank you very much, man.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Um, I don't see any additional questions or comments. Just wanted to thank you as well and share the sentiment of my fellow colleagues, um, for you and the volunteers. Many days I've seen, um, everyone inside our city hall chambers just working passionately. Um, they had passion, leadership, saw many leadership skills there, um, and just really caring about our community for the city of Laurel. But I think overall Maryland, I would hear them talk big picture. So thank you very much for leading this, and I will not continue talking. Um, I will now, um, open the general public hearing portion for the second, um, public, I'm sorry, uh, for the second public hearings for this. I will now open it at seven PM. Just to confirm, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak for, um, this resolution number seven dash two zero two five?
Uh, no, Madam President, there's no one signed up.
And to correct that, sorry, resolution number six dash two zero two five. We have a lot on the agenda today, okay? There's no one, uh, signed up to speak today, so I will now close the general public hearing portion at seven oh one PM. Um, and with no additional comments or questions, I will now entertain a motion, uh, for this resolution.
Madam President, I move that the council approve and adopt Resolution six dash twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second that.
I have a, a motion from Councilmember James Cole and a second from Councilmember Jeffrey Mills. If you can please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Council, Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Sidnor?
I concur.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you again, uh, Ms. Blair for your work. Moving to agenda item number ten, we have an introduction and first public hearing on resolution number seven dash two zero two five, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, expressing support for Woodland Job Corps Center and urging continued federal funding for the Job Corps program. Uh, we recently received on June seventeenth a request for a resolution from Daniel Wright, who serves as a field coordinator for the UBC National Job Corps Training Fund, um, in support of the Woodland Job Corps Center and urging continued federal investment in the National Job Corps program. For this, oh, actually, I'm sorry. Are there any questions or comments from the council? I see that, uh, Councilmember Simmons, please feel free to proceed.
Yes, just a quick comment, uh, for folks who wanted to learn more about the Woodland Job Corps program. It's in Laurel, sort of out towards one ninety-eight area. And if they go back and watch the session from July second, our work session, he was here with us at that meeting and they can learn more how that works. It's, uh, the website is woodland dot jobcorps dot gov. And I also wanted to take a moment to, uh, with that, uh, mention the governor's program as well, uh, and his sort of year of service to Maryland Corps. And we had one of the members of, uh, the governor's cabinet come out to us, the Maryland Secretary for the department, uh, visited us, um, for civic service. And, uh, check that out. These programs are really great for youth to get some job training skills, um, especially if they may not go nowhere to go or they may not have resources. I know the gentleman who was with us last time said some people may even be homeless, but this can be a way of a first step of getting them some training to get them to the housing and to get them a job and sort of get them off on a good path. So I just wanted to share those resources in case they were helpful to folks. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Council, uh, member Jeffrey Mills, feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just wanted to throw out an idea. I don't know if, um, you know, perhaps, um, since I'm talking about saving money, I just wanted to know if there would be, like, perhaps we could have money in our budget, uh, to support, you know, not just speaking about it, but, you know, supporting it and being about it. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. I believe the mayor heard you. You can also feel free to put that in writing as well and email our mayor directly. Is it, are there any more questions or comments from the council? All right, seeing that there are no additional questions or comments, I will now open the general public hearing portion for this item at seven oh four PM. To confirm, Madam Clerk, is anyone signed up to speak on resolution number seven dash two zero two five?
No, Madam President, we have no one signed up.
Thank you. With no one, with no one signed up to speak on this agenda item, I will now close the general public hearing portion at seven oh five PM. Um, this item will be moved, uh, if there is no objection by the council to our next meeting on Ju- July twenty-eighth for a second public hearing with possible action. Moving to agenda item number eleven, we have an introduction and first public hearing on ordinance number two, zero, three, seven, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland to amend Laurel City Code, Chapter seven, garbage waste and weeds and recycling, et cetera. Section seven dash thirty-six, public education and enforcement. Section seven dash thirty-eight, penalties and adding section seven dash thirty-seven point one, notice of violation and providing an effective date. To introduce and provide additional information this evening, we have Councilmember James Cole and Councilmember Adrian Simmons. Please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, as we mentioned, this was discussed at the July second work session. During that work session, the council had some concern for inconsistency on definitions throughout the document. Um, the changes that were so, sent out to everyone last week, uh, uh, Mr. Simmons and I did work on this to, uh, clear up those definitions. We ran it past Ms. Blair to make sure that it would pass muster. Um, so everything is all consistent now, and it will only affect the condominium units that have a shared waste receptacle such as a trash corral. That is all I have that has changed since the work session. Mr. Simmons or Ms. Blair, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
You know, just, just to recap some of the points we made there too, there's, we've edited a few different things in this document. One is the effective date for certain homeowners that the city is pursuing, uh, options to be able to serve them with the compost service. Um, the second was just clarifying some of the, the different members of the city that'll be part of it. And now, and for me, one of the edits that I, I wanted to introduce was just, um, harmonizing some of the enforcement to just our general city processes to say that everybody should receive a notice, um, first, just to make it a more human process. And also that the city is able to do any inspections on the street as opposed to coming into the property. Um, one thing I've learned through this process even more is the number of places we pick up trash from, uh, and this sort of distinguishing each one of these sort of seven categories. So the single family, the town home, the condos with individual trash pickup, the condos with shared trash pickup. And we've even got a few apartments and a few commercial in there. So it clarifying who's affected, who's not affected, and when they're affected was very important, uh, part of what this is about. So certainly if folks have questions, feel free to reach out, uh, from the residents and then, of course, I'm on council, happy to entertain any questions you have tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there any additional? Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? Seeing that there are none, I will now open the general public hearing portion for this item, ordinance number two zero three seven at seven oh eight P M. To confirm for the record, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak on ordinance number two zero three seven?
I know, Madam President, we have no one signed up.
Thank you. With no one signed up to speak on ordinance number two zero three seven, I will now close the general public hearing portion at seven oh eight P M. This item will be moved to our July twenty eighth agenda for a second public hearing with possible action. Thank you again, Councilmember Cole and Councilmember Simmons. Moving to agenda item number twelve, we have the introduction and first public hearing on ordinance number two zero four two, an ordinance amending the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July one twenty twenty four through June thirtieth twenty twenty five and to provide an effective date. Here with us this evening, we have Director Michelle Saylor to provide us with additional information. You now have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. As we discussed at the work session, the Sixth Amendment to the F Y twenty five operating budget and C I P increases the operating budget by nine hundred sixty five thousand forty four dollars. What is included in that is the appropriation of the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act. That is our expenditure for F Y twenty five, which includes city financial, a city resident financial assistance through a program we have with Lars, small business assistance, work on the city's strategic plan, our record digitization project for many of our original documents, and H O A playground replacement assistance, the Laurel City Swimming Pool renovations, stormwater drain filters and furniture for the Laurel Multi-Service Center. That's the nine hundred twenty thousand, forty thousand in police account receipts. That's the use of seized currency, which was used to purchase a new K nine officer and to install two outdoor canine enclosures, as well as the purchase of vest plates for our E R T personnel. And then the five thousand forty four dollars, which were the financial activities of the Fourth of July Committee, which included the rental of the sound system, the car show awards, the crane services, and the purchase of an event tent. And that was from the twenty twenty four event. So those are the additions. However, we also have some transfers within the expenditure budget. Ten thousand dollars from the mayor's budget is being transferred to the elections budget because we required additional funds for the election attorney with the work on the election law revisions. We also have transfers from the Goody House Maintenance Budget and the Laurel Multi-Service Center Maintenance Budget, which are reductions, and those transfers are made to the other city facility maintenance budgets for increase in utilities as well as some major HVAC repairs. And additionally, we have available funds from the snow removal budget of seventy five thousand and the employee training budget of twenty five thousand, which will be transferred to the capital improvement program for the Van Duzen Road Dam Project and the Archive Room filing system purchase that we need to make. And that concludes the change, the proposed changes, Madam President. I will add, as we discussed, the creation of the arbitrage reserve account, which will become due and payable in July of twenty twenty eight, four years after we created the participation with the State of Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development and the loan of eight million sixty two thousand two hundred forty three dollars. And the, the interest rate which those funds are earning is greater than the interest rate on our debt service. So it will, it creates a rebate liability and will require us to make a payment to the United States Treasury once every four years during the term of the loans. So all of those items are included in ordinance twenty forty two.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Saylor. In addition, if anyone would like additional information, we had a special work session prior to this meeting at five thirty P M. Please feel free to go back to look at that as well. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council regarding ordinance number two zero four two? I see your hand up. Councilmember Simmons, please feel free to proceed.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And just for the record, too, I think, like you said, there was a couple of questions that came out of the work session. So in my mind, it was, the follow up was clarifying the method of how the interest earnings are being applied to the loan balance. This relates to the interest arbitrage. And then clarifying the operation of the arbitrage reserve itself, whether that's being determined by just what's the tax set aside is, the installment payment differential, or the interest arbitrage figure itself. And then I think I had one other query open with Director Saylor from last Friday, but we'll get that all worked out, I'm sure, this week. But I just wanted to state that into the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council regarding ordinance number two zero four two? If not, I will now open this item on the agenda for the general public hearing at seven fourteen P M. To confirm, Madam Clerk, is anyone signed up to speak on ordinance number two zero four two?
I know, Madam President, we have no one signed up.
Thank you for confirming. With no one signed up to speak on ordinance number two zero four two, I will now close the general public hearing portion at seven fourteen P M. This item, if there is no objection from the council, this item will be placed on our July twenty eighth agenda for a second public hearing with possible action. Thank you. Moving to agenda item number thirteen, we have a mayoral appointment for Nikisa Matlock for Deputy City Administrator. Mayor Keith Sidnor, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I bring in Ms. Matlock, I just want to make two quick announcements. Ms. Ortiz, Community School Coordinator from Scottstown Elementary School, she wants to do a citywide back to school drive. I have not contacted Director Bailey yet, but the listening director Bailey, she wants to do it on August fifteenth from ten A M. to five P M. And that's a school, a citywide school drive. So once again, that's Ms. Ortiz from Scottstown Elementary School. She's going to be coordinating with all the community school coordinators in our district, do one back to school drive altogether. I like the idea, but I haven't contacted Park and Rec. So this is the first time I'm asking Park and Rec. to find us a building from ten A M. to five P M. And want to coordinate all the back to school drives, all the elementary schools and high schools and middle schools, any other nonprofit organizations that want to attend. I think that's the best way to do the school drive. That way, what's central location and be the best for our community, I believe. So I will follow back up with Director Bailey and I'll get back with Ms. Ortiz. And to follow up with Councilmember Mills' question, I totally we'd need to fund that, but the city cannot fund it. That is the Department of Labor, Job Corps have been around for, I don't know how many years, but the Department of Labor is the funding source. So I recommend we contact, we're going to do anyway, we're going to send a letter out to our United States Senator Van Hollen and also Senator Alsobrook and also Congressman Glenn Ives, that's our fourth district congressman and our two United States senators who fund the Department of Labor to, for Job Corps to remain in existence. So we'll start with those federal government first. One of the duties as the mayor is to pick his administration. And as you know, Julian Bar, who served the city very well, retired and so they left a vacancy. And I want to bring someone in that is highly qualified, worked with her at C M I T Middle School. She has the knowledge and the skills and the ability to perform this job as a deputy city administrator. Ms. Matlock has the comprehensive experience in educational leadership, a master's degree in educational administration, has demonstrated competencies in communication, operation, planning, strategic thinking, and leadership equipped for skills necessary to excel in this job. I gave the council members opportunity to meet Ms. Matlock in person. I provided the council member with Ms. Matlock's resume. And Ms. Matlock is on the call, here today to answer any questions that the council may have for her as well. But I respectfully request the confirmation of Ms. Matlock to be the deputy city administrator. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. If it is at the pleasure of the council, do I have a motion to appoint Ms. Nikisa Matlock for Deputy City Administrator?
Madam President, I move that we confirm the mayor's appointment of Ms. Nikisa Matlock to the role of Deputy City Administrator.
I have a motion, Councilmember Simmons, and a second from Councilmember Christine Johnson. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Sorry. Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
President Clark? You're on mute, Council President.
I abstain.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Would you like for Ms. Matlock to speak as well?
Um, yes. Before I, thank you, council. I really appreciate that, both the confidence in my ability and Ms. Matlock. Looking forward to working with you as well as a deputy city administrator. But before I do bring Ms. Matlock on, I want to thank Director Tim Miller, who does a superb job as acting city administrator and also Deputy Director Tommy Hamms and Mr. Anthony Robinson, also holding down D P W. Really appreciate that. Ms. Matlock, I give you opportunity to say a few words to the city council and new staff.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Sidnor, as well as councilmembers, Councilman Simmons, Councilmember Mills, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Coles, and thank you so much for the opportunity, Council President, Ms. Clark. Thank you for confirming this for me. I am a hard worker and I'm pretty sure you will be very pleased with your decision and we won't regret it. I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you so much for having me become on board.
Mayor Sidnor, do you have any additional comments as well?
Nah, Ms. Matlock, I can turn your camera around and it makes sense, but it's okay.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm working with two computer screens. My apologies.
No problem. We'll get you straight. Thank you once again, council. We appreciate that. That's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Congratulations, Ms. Nikisa Matlock. And that, that is all of our agenda items for this evening. Thank you, everyone, again for your time tonight. We hope to see you as always at our upcoming events and public meetings with no further business to come before the mayor and city council. This meeting is now adjourned at seven twenty P M. Have a great night.